...our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
Okay, we'll call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Human Services Committee to order, and we'll have roll call, please.
Commissioner Semasko. Commissioner Tomian. Commissioner Hydeman.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing. Commissioner Greatop.
Here.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Okay, if we could stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there any additions or deletions or changes to the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, are there any citizens to be heard tonight? Okay, seeing none, how about updates? Any updates tonight?
Nothing.
Conceptual initiatives? Old business? Resolution 13 to 17 area agency on aging 1B annual implementation plan. Tonight, hey, we have with us Tina Varzov. Would you like to step up, please? Welcome.
Thank you.
I know you had to do some real hustling to get here because of the accident out there.
I should know better than to leave at 4:00 to come to St. Clair County from the direction I came from, so. But yeah, I'm glad to be here, thank you very much. We come to this Board of Commissioners meeting at least once a year and send quarterly updates on the resources that we receive from the federal and state and also the $14,000 of county match that we use to provide services to older people, primarily older people in this county. We work very closely with the Council on Aging Serving St. Clair, who is a major provider in the community. And we present this plan to you so that you have an idea of how we're going to be using about $2 million of funding here in the county and what are the programmatic objectives that we're going to be focusing on for the next year. This plan that we're presenting is actually a three-year plan. We're required by the federal government to prepare a three-year plan. It's kind of like a strategic plan, but we do update it annually and bring annual updates to you all. So this is our three-year plan, 14 to 16. It does not include any budget cuts that may come as a result of sequestration. It also does not include any, about $500,000 of statewide additional money that's been allocated for home-delivered meals. We did not, we have not received the formal notification of that allocation yet. We do anticipate that the region will receive about 250,000, I'm sorry, 125,000 of that 500,000 statewide will come into the region and a portion of that will come to St. Clair County. But we will continue to update you in our quarterly updates on that financing as we get the resources. I think you must, you probably received a, like a summary, you should have received a summary of what's in the plan, and then you may have printed for yourself, and I did hear from Commissioner just a few moments ago, the full plan. The full plan's about 270 pages, and I didn't take note that there is an error in one of the focal points in St. Clair County. The former Cherry Beach site has now been moved to the Washington Life Center. I'm very familiar with that center, I've been there several times.
That's on page 45, by the way.
I noticed that the page, you had told me 51, right? I did catch that. So we'll be making that correction. As a result, we have an intern that updates our community focal points, and we'll make a note on that. I guess the biggest thing, the biggest areas that we're really working on now in the county are bringing evidence-based health and wellness programs into the county. I would say that's the most important program that we're bringing into the county. We're also working to bring in extra resources. We've lost about 28% of our state funding for senior services. The sequestration coming in the third quarter was also more impactful than it would have been had we received it at the beginning of the fiscal year. Our fiscal year starts October 1st, and sequestration did not hit until the third quarter. So what we've done is we have prioritized our home-delivered meal program over congregate meals. The fact that you have a nice, a very nice, and you just increased your senior millage here in the county means that the seniors here in St. Clair County are very, very well protected from some of the other economic impacts funding a lot of the human service programs. So that was a real blessing. We were very, very involved in working with Laura Newsom and the whole committee that was involved in the millage increase that was successfully secured. So if there's any questions on the area agency plan, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Commissioner Greatop. Lisa, I noticed that representation under, we currently have a vacancy for an older adult representative of St. Clair County.
That vacancy has been filled by Vern Bartley, who actually has moved from our business sector over to the older adult sector. I don't...
That position is now filled.
It is now filled.
It seemed important because I see McComb, Livingston, and other places are being represented. Obviously, we would want representation as well.
You are, where we are lacking representation is on our advisory council from St. Clair County. The Board of Directors is represented by Vern Bartley and Commissioner Riley, who's our new commissioner, and we're happy to have him. Yes, we do need more members of the advisory council. They're very active in advocacy positions. I work very closely with Laura Newsom. There was a man that used to be a county commissioner, his name was Wally, and I've really been trying to reach him. He knew, he was very interested in senior issues. If anyone has his phone number, I would love it, because I think he might be nice for advisory council if he had an interest in it. And by the way, it is a ways to come to an advisory council meeting, but we are, we have technology that people can participate via phone. We draw from all six counties, we're a regional entity, so we do cover 29% of the state's older adult population. If you know of anyone who's interested, I've been working primarily through Vern Bartley and through Laura Newsom, but if you do know anyone that would like to serve in the advisory council, we could use more representation from St. Clair there.
Also, there's a vacancy, and it's called DHS?
Department of Human Services is an area, we always try to have somebody from the Department of Human Services. And actually, your Department of Human Services representative recently retired. She was excellent, and I'm blanking on her name just because I'm standing here in front of you.
I just think it's important that we represent them.
Yeah, but St. Clair County, we do, you're very well represented on the board. Vern Bartley has been the chair, and he doesn't really ever miss a meeting. He was also our finance committee. So very well represented on the board, but we could use more representation on the advisory council.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I, no question, Tina, but I attended the meeting in June.
Yeah.
And I gotta admit that I was really taken back a little bit how well it was run, number one. It's the first meeting I attended, but the, one of the big things that the focus is, is trying to keep people in their homes rather than sending them off to assisted living, et cetera. And I think that's, as I said that day, and I have to say now, that I think that's extremely important for some of our people, that because of not only economics, they don't want to leave their home.
Yeah.
And the programs you're working on, and the program you showed that day, I thought was just excellent.
Thank you, yes. We do try to support people wherever they want to be, but we know that most people do want to stay in their home. Most of our services are for services that keep people in their homes. And now with our evidence-based programs, we're really working hard to help people to understand what their chronic conditions are and how to live with them in the most successful way. So it's not that we're against nursing homes, it's not that we're against assisted living. There's a lot of great places to live in the community. Most important thing is to be in the community, obviously. But we do try to keep people in their homes because we know that that's a strong desire.
Any other questions?
Just one comment. By the way, we picked the older member of the board.
[laughing]
But not only do, when you keep a senior citizen in their own home, it is also financially much cheaper to do that. Is that correct?
Yes, we, the cost of keeping someone in the home is generally a third of the cost that it might be in another setting. Most often, the reason for that is because the home itself is generally paid for and we have to, you know, we maintain the taxes and things like that. The other reason is because there's local informal supports that are in the community. So for example, maybe millage-funded services, maybe neighbors, family members, whereas if you go into an institutional setting, you know, you have to pay for all the different levels of staffing. You just can't leverage the informal supports, is what we call them. So there are things that are not covered by tax dollars and that you don't have to privately pay for. So yes, that's very true. It makes economic sense, and it's also what people want. There is a very strong, very strong, I guess, historical preference to spend tax dollars on institutional care, and the area agency on aging is, works very hard, along with the local service providers, to change that bias, to really make it home and community-based as a first option for people, rather than, you know, just a secondary option or a limited option. So right now, for tax-funded purposes, for long-term care services, nursing home care is a right, an entitlement program. Any other type of care is an optional program, and that's why it's so limited. And we are working very hard to change that. We feel very strongly that as the population continues to age, or live, as I like to call it, as people continue to live, they are going to want to have tax dollars more directed towards keeping them in their home where we can leverage informal supports and be meeting what people want, which is, you know, to be able to age in their homes, if they can.
One follow-up question.
Yes.
And that would require a federal change to make that happen?
There are both federal and state requirements, but federal certainly on the nursing home side, not that there's anything wrong with nursing home care and we need nursing homes. So I want to be perfectly clear. What we are pushing for is that home and community-based care is not just an option for people, but that it could be a first option. Home and community first. And that, and that if you're gonna spend one-third of the dollars, wouldn't, you know, if it was, if tax dollars were, for example, in your pocket, which, you know, technically, theoretically they are, would you want to spend one-third of your money to take care of your needs before you'd spend three times as much to take care of your needs? Of course you would, right? Wouldn't you try to find the thing that was the most cost-effective that would meet your needs? It's like gasoline. You know, you don't have to buy the 92 octane if the 87 octane works, right? You know, you buy the 92 if you need it for performance and you need it, you know, your car's knocking if you only put in the 87. So that is a federal change that needs to occur, and there's a lot of reasons to support that. And I think a lot of folks don't really understand why we should really be focusing on that, particularly as the population ages. So it is federal, we can do, we can work very hard at the state and local levels to be encouraging that. Most of your millage dollars is going towards home and community-based care. So you're getting, you're leveraging and you're supporting the home and community-based network and doing that, and, you know, the simple answer to your question is yes, it's federal, but there's a lot of other layers and a lot of other government, a lot of other lobbies that are involved in that. So it's a complicated issue. I'm simplifying it, but as best as I can. But your answer is, the answer to your question is yes. Changes have to occur, and they should occur soon, hopefully.
Any other questions or comments?
I would make a motion to go down to the full board.
No support?
Second.
We have roll call on that, please.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you have any, and I knew you might have some literature you wanted to leave or any pamphlets, so you can leave them on the table if you'd like. We'll make sure to get in the right spot.
I'll do that, I'll leave some general information. Thank you.
Thanks for the effort coming up tonight, too.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, moving on, other human services matters. Okay, information only.
Make a motion to receive and file items A through B in information only.
Order. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Move, will you adjourn?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary and Public Safety Meeting to order. President take the roll, please. Commissioner Semasko.
Here.
Commissioner Tomian.
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Chairman Greatop.
Here.
Don't see any additions or deletions. Does anybody have anything?
I move the approval of the agenda as presented.
Order.
Move and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. An update, item 4A on the 9/11 service plan. Mr. Kaufman?
Yes. At a previous board meeting, the issue of how we currently fund and distribute funds that are collected through the 911 service charges that all of us see on our phone bills was brought up, and administration was asked to like, take a look at our current process and formulas for distribution of those funds, also look at how the recent change to the amount of the surcharge that would be coming back to the county might affect that distribution, and report back to the board if we were distributing in the most efficient manner and if there were alternatives available for doing so. Staff has been meeting and reviewing some of this. We did discover at one of our internal meetings a few weeks ago that some of the very basic information that we were looking for was going to disappear, and that is information that's very essential to the current formula that we use. We did some scrambling, the 911 director did, as well as staff in the accounting department to try and track down what was going on, see if we could gather that information. It was, it was the line count information that normally is distributed on July 1st of every year. And I'm sure all of you realize that the line count information is essential, it's kind of the backbone to how we distribute those funds under our current, our current distribution plan. The accounting department was able to track someone down at one of the telecommunications companies that was able to provide us with the information. We're not sure if we'll be able to get it in the future, but that's something that I think all the 911 centers throughout the state of Michigan, as well as the state of Michigan, is trying to determine right now.
And the reason that's so critical for us is because our 911 plan has the formula, the line count is the piece.
Correct.
Of the formula, distribution formula.
Exactly. We take the total of the funds divided by the line count based on geographic representation, and the funds are distributed accordingly. Well, it looks like in the future that line count information may not be available to us, so staff is in the process right now of exploring alternative methods of distributing those funds. We've got calls out. The 911 director has made some contacts with some of his peers throughout the state to determine what others will be doing. As soon as we have some recommendations and alternative approaches that we can present to the board, we will do so. We think that probably at your August meeting, we'll be able to present a report with a list of alternative methods as well as a recommendation on how we might move forward.
Any questions for Mr. Kaufman? Commissioner Semasko? Bill, the, the plan that you're talking about, is that contained and filed with and adopted by the state? Is that something the state passes on, or is that something the board had formally adopted?
It is a plan that the board adopts.
And that's statutory basis for us to adopt that?
Correct.
And we've met that, so is there, here's a review process or an update process on, maybe we should look at it from that angle, is update that, so it takes care of it?
Correct.
And I have some concerns about the 911 dispatch advisory board, there's some bylaws. I think we should look at that whole piece of it, since there's been some changes in the community. I'd like an opportunity to do that.
Eight years, 10 years ago, I've been on the board eight and a half years ago, the cell phone voice, you know, all that stuff, that was still coming into, you know, fruition as far as the funding pieces of it, charges attached.
I get that, I get that.
Yeah, so we need to review.
My point is, maybe we should review the whole piece of it and get all those pieces put together that better reflect...
And I agree with you, because it just documents eight years ago kind of thing, so we need to look at, you know, because the state's changed as far as charging now on cell phones and all types of things.
Commissioner Tomian?
But, but that's how we, back then, determined to pay for the build-out of the 9/11 dispatch when it went to 800 megahertz, is that correct?
It was, I believe that is an element of the plan, yes, how that would be built out and funded.
And funded, so, yeah, we need to get a handle on it.
There has been a lot of changes. The world has changed, the technology has changed since the plan was adopted, and certainly one of the recommendations we will be making is that that plan be revisited.
I think Commissioner Semasko's point was well-taken, and we really need to look at the whole package and not just do one piece or two pieces, but look at the entire package and make sure that when we're done with it, it services everybody the way it's supposed to.
I agree, if it's been that long since the beginning, and time flies, I think, I agree, I think that should be, look at the big picture here.
Very good. Anything else, gentlemen? Moving on to conceptual initiatives. Hearing none, there is no old business under new business, 7A, the inter-agency agreement between Family Division and Community Mental Health regarding day treatment night watch. I see Gary Rotowski is here. Gary, if you would fill us in, please.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is an annual agreement that we have with Community Mental Health. They provide our clinical services at our day treatment night watch program. The total of the agreement is over $190,000, and our obligation of that is only $59,507. And for that $59,000, we get the services of two clinical therapists who provide all of our clinical services at the program, and if we were to go outside to get that, I would dare say we would probably be spending the whole $190,000. So it's an excellent deal for us, and we're asked, or I'm asking that you approve the agreement tonight.
Questions for Gary?
I would move the approval of the inter-agency agreement between Family Division and Community Mental Health regarding the day treatment night watch center.
Motion. That is a question. I do have one question for Gary. Gary, did you do that? Okay, I do have a motion to second, so wait. Gary, with some of the changes that may be happening over at the Juvenile Center, is there, should there be any reference in this contract that would might reference some of the changes you've been talking about recently?
Not at this time. We're actually meeting with Community Mental Health next week to discuss that, so we're hopeful that they're going to be able to give us the same type of deal.
So it might be a separate contract or amend this contract?
Yes.
That's it. Okay, thanks, Gary. Any other questions? I have a motion to second, all in favor of sending this on to the full board?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we'll go to the full board. Item 7B is the fiscal year 2012 Homeland Security Operation Stone Garden Grant Agreement. Make motion.
I would support that.
Motion to support to send it on to the full board, any discussion, any questions? I have one, and I don't know who to direct it to. I see that we're getting about $164,000, and it's to be divided between the St. Clair County Sheriff's Office, the St. Clair County Marine Sheriff, or the Marine Patrol, City of Marysville, City of Marine City, City of Port Huron, Clay Township, and Michigan State Police. Does anybody know how that is divided up? How is it determined as to who gets how much of that pie?
I almost think every, it's my understanding that it gets distributed evenly amongst the nine different entities that... Because I know, for example, Clay Township's about 16,000. If you look at this and you do the math on it, percentages, don't take that to the bank, don't put that... But that is, that was my...
I had heard before that it's divided up into pieces, and each agency gets one piece, or they might get two pieces, the sheriff gets two or three pieces of it. I guess I'm kind of wondering what happened. Algonquin used to be in here, and now that the sheriff has taken over Algonquin, does the sheriff get another piece? Do you know how that works?
Yes, it's a new, yes, if I leave a north, a central, a south piece, so three portions of Algonquin.
So you get a total of three of the pieces.
No, Algonquin.
Now you get four.
Okay.
And then each of the other entities would get?
One.
One piece. Okay. Commissioner Semasko.
Dave?
A question for Bill. When we do the distribution, is that then by, that's by board resolution, or do we have emergency management? Does that, you have oversight? How does that work?
I have not seen requests come to me for distribution of those funds. I think it's something that's done internally between the individual departments, emergency management, and then the accounting department. We can certainly find out for you.
I'm just curious, I would think that, I know that our emergency management is a subordinate of your office, so you'd have oversight, and then that's our connection to that process. I would like some information on that. It's a lot of money, at least know what the process is. I believe in all honesty, I have talked to Jeff Friedland before about it, and he does have a policy in place as to how to distribute that money, and if that policy was established by this board at some point, I don't know. That's my question, is what degree of input had the board, does the board have in the past or present in the distribution? Okay. Bill, can we get that information before the full board?
Certainly can.
All right. If we send this on then to the full board and we get that answer by that time, will that satisfy?
Yes.
Okay. Then I guess I would be open for motion. Did we already have it?
Yeah.
All good. All right, then, all in favor of sending this on to the full board?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Any other judiciary public safety matters? None, information only. We have a Board of Canvassers appointment, I think our clerk made an appointment to Dean Boleroff.
Dean Boleroff?
Yep. To the Board of Canvassers. You have an E-9/11 technical surcharge pool financial statement, and you have an amendment 2012/13 childcare fund balance approval for information only. I would be open to a motion to receive and file those.
I'd move.
Second?
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion receive and file?
I'd move.
Second?
Oweed and seconded to receive and file of the packet, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, adjourned.
Move, will you adjourn?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, Mr. Clerk, whatever, yeah, whatever, would you take the role, please?
Commissioner Samasko?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian? Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing? Commissioner Greatop?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Chairman Hyden?
Here.
At this time, are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Did you want to make something, final action first?
Yeah, go ahead, we could.
You want me to move that 7A becomes final action?
Would you please?
I so moved.
This time, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. We have an amended agenda. Citizens to be heard, do we have any citizens to be heard? Seeing none, any updates from commissioners regarding environmental or public works meeting? Just a comment, if you didn't make it to the Sandfest, you missed out on a great event and a great party, and I'm sure that with its success, we'll definitely see that again next year. Any conceptual initiatives from administration?
Not this evening.
Okay. Any old business? None listed. New business, first item would be the light station equipment building electrical work. Mark Bushu, Director of Park and Rec, is here to pull us in on the details there.
This year's project at the light station is to install a barrier-free restroom in the equipment building. If you're not familiar with that, it's the four bay garage immediately inside the gate, as you enter the gate, on the right-hand side, there's a four bay garage. In the historic structures report that was approved by the National Park Service, when the county took over ownership of the property, included a goal to install a barrier-free restroom in that building. If you recall, last year, there was a restroom installed in the Fog Signal Building, so this would be the two barrier-free restrooms to service the property. We have broken the project up into pieces and parts, as you may know. Tim May is our park operations supervisor that supervises that project, so he's general, he's acting as the general contract, and we're breaking out the various trades to do the work. Si Design did the schematic, I think you had included in your packet for how the work would be done, and then Mr. May solicited the various trades. Most of the trades pieces came in well under $5,000 and did not need your action. However, the electrical portion of the project that includes moving the main electrical panel from that building and the service from the current room it's in, which will be the restroom, and moving it up on the second floor, so added substantially to the work. Mr. May solicited from many contractors, but received three proposals for the work, and that's included in his memo that should be in your packet. Russell Electric, TNT Electric, and BNT Electric all submitted bids, and Russell Electric was the low bidder at $11,313. Just to clarify, in the second page of Mr. Russell's proposal, included $2,519 of additional or alternate work that we have decided not to do and that the other contractors did not bid on, so it is an apples-to-apples solicitation. So our recommendation is that you award a contract to Russell, award the project to Russell Electric for $11,313. Russell Electric has done not a lot of work, but several jobs for us, and this comes as great credentials and is highly respected.
Okay, did we get a motion on this? I would entertain a motion?
I'd so move.
Okay, for final action, supported by Commissioner Greatop. Any questions regarding this?
Could you make a record, a mark of why final action is necessary? There must be some need.
Do you want to comment on?
Well, the project can't start until the electrical panel gets moved, and the rest, all the other companies are waiting in line, because this one exceeded the $10,000 threshold. That would just start the process two weeks sooner and.
I assume the park is quite active this time of year? The area is quite active or no?
It was very active last week, and this could have minimal impact on the average visitor that comes to see the lighthouse in the Fog Signal Building, so it can easily be done right now.
So I just wonder why.
You might just elaborate a little bit on how much funding it had busting through the concrete to try to put in the sewer.
Yeah, apparently in the 1930s, the federal government built buildings to last, there is the concrete floor that, like, one of the pieces that we're doing internally is taking out sections of the floor where the sewer lines would go, and there's rebar, wire mesh, you name it, and we have a couple of strapping young seasonal employees that have met their match in the concrete and the floor.
Go ahead, Mr. Greatop.
If I'm not mistaken, I think Commissioner Hyden mentioned that eventually the museum is going to put the gift shop over into this building?
That is the original plan that we're moving towards eventually.
Larger space?
Larger space, but even before they do that, they'll use this as a rental space and programming space, so they'll start using it immediately.
As the in and the out, so you're going to be able to get the people coming and going faster. I mean, you won't lose these people, the sale of these people, because they have to go right by them, whereas they have to walk across the park to the other side.
Well, in order to do the tours and ticketing for the tours, they have to go in the gift shop right now, the current gift shop.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Clerk, could we roll the call on that?
Sure.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden?
Yes.
Thank you, Mark. The irrevocable letter of credit renewal for the landfill. Do this about every other year, don't we?
Yes. Make the motion.
This will be passed on to the full board. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Sheldon Construction Accounts receivable write-off at the landfill.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bohm, seconded by Commissioner Samasko. Yeah, well, we tried. We'll send this on to the full board. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Fixed base operator concessions agreement, Aviation Express for the airport. See Kathy's here, do you have any questions?
Actually, I'm going to talk a little bit about this. We, well, as you, many of you know, we purchased the buildings out at the airport from Orzell Aviation. Mr. Orzell is in the process of retiring, or he's going to move and kind of slow down a little bit, so that really leaves a void for a FBO out at our airport. We in the past have went out for FBO respondents, never really had a lot of luck, and let's face it, back in '08, '09, people weren't beating your door down to do that line of work either. When we went out this time, we received four different proposals from different individuals. We put a committee together on our end of it, Kathy, Jeff Beckett, we have a, actually, an airport advisory committee along with commissioners, myself, Bill, you were part of that, Carl Tommy was part of that, Mr. Kaufman brought the different individuals in, interviewed them, and felt that this individual was the clear choice to be the one. So then we directed Kathy along with, I know Gary Fletcher and some of the others to work the process, to get an agreement to come back for us for services, and so hence, that's where we are today.
I could add to that, I thought it was a very good process. Quite a few meetings, a lot of hard work, for viable people, and I think we settled on one that, I think it was pretty much in agreement, I think that the entire committee kind of gravitated to the one that we ended up selecting, which I always think is a good, good choice. There was no five-four split or anything like that, I think everybody was in full agreement as to who was going to do this. And he's going to relocate, which means he's going to come down here with his family, he's going to buy a house down here. I just thought it was positive all the way down, and I think it was well handled nicely done. Kathy?
What's all I'm here for tonight is for your approval for this contract.
Okay. Any other questions for Kathy? Commissioner Samasko?
I just want for Kathy, but maybe you know this, Bill, on page nine, page six, item 15, the notices, they list individuals that you can provide notice under the contract to, and they've got Peter Toley, Senior Attorney, Foster, Swift Collins Coe. Does he represent Aviation Express, I assume?
Yes.
Perhaps we should add Corporation Counsel, I mean, just so if there's notices going out, it goes to you, but I think it would be, you know, add designated Corporation Counsel for St. Clair County, that way an attorney might see something that he might not appreciate.
Now, do you need a motion to amend the contractor, or should we just?
I don't think so.
Just bring it back in final documents next week, two weeks from now?
One of the things I do want to note in the contract, not saying that would happen, but there's a 90-day out clause in this. Yeah, so hence, now that the county owns the facilities and the assets out there, we have the ability, if somebody's not working out to our, you know, liking, better lack of choice of words, than we're able to, you know, go out and find somebody else. I think we all feel that our county is a viable asset, and if you saw the newspaper here the other day that talked about some of the top priorities, the nine different areas, actually, the county airport was one of them that was on there, and that, not yours truly putting it on there, that was voted by the Blue Meets Green Committee and a larger group, which was 75 individuals. So, it is a big asset, it needs to be managed right, and hopefully we can get an individual in there that'll help, you know, take it to the next level.
In a way I read this, Jeff, is it may be terminated by the county, not by them, just, it's one side, it's a one-way street.
Correct.
Right. I like it.
I knew you would.
Well, as chair of this committee, I like the fuel cells incentives in that, too. I think that's, that's a good, because that's been an issue in the past, and to see it in there, that gives that fixed base provider a little more incentive to get out there when he gets a call at 2:00 in the morning, I need to fill my jet.
And actually, Mr. Orzell, he had even contacted me regarding this, and he knew the other individuals, and he had said that he'd had previous dealings with them, and he felt that he was the, you know, most qualified out of the bunch, too, so that's kind of a tight, you know.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor of saying this on to the board?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
We have the Smiths Creek Landfill Activities Report. Any comments? Been spending a lot of time out there lately. Still moving, still moving forward on dealing with the issues. Other environmental public works matters, any? Information only, we have the SEMCOGS public comment period for the transportation improvement program, we have the park and rec financial documents, we have the city of Port Huron letter regarding the HUD Guarantee Conference, and a letter of support for the Comprehensive Economic Strategy Planning Grant.
I'd make the motion, receive and file, information only on A through D.
Court. Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nays? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Court? In support, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nays? We are adjourned. And who's taking the next committee here? Ways and Means? Commissioner Bohm?
No, Steve's here, no.
Oh. Actually, I don't have my glasses tonight, this spot's really kind of, if you would do it, Jeff, that's great, I can, fortunately, I read this a couple times where I came in.
I'd like to, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order, please, we'll call.
Commissioner Samasko?
Here.
Commissioner Hyden?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian? Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing? Commissioner Greatop?
Here.
Chairman Bohm?
Here. Item number two, additions, deletions, changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that under the additions, that 2A becomes 7H, and 2B becomes 7I.
Actually, we would just remove the piece of it from the D.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
So, delete the convergent design from the D part. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
I would move that we accept the amended agenda. Court?
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, moving on. Citizens to be heard, are there any citizens for Ways and Means, seeing none, updates? Any updates to come before the board? Seeing none, conceptual initiatives?
Could I?
No, would you have something? Okay.
Yes. Actually, Ms. Hebding has some information to share with you regarding an item that was on your, in front of you today, and, and to discuss with you the latest on the 2014 budget prep.
We received the final copies of our 2012 audit, and I passed them out in front of you. They are also available on the county's website. Stuart Volve and Whipple will be coming in, I believe, next month or in September to present the audit, their audit to you, the results and any findings that they had. Any questions on the audit?
Just one, and that is, we ended up in the black?
Yes. Yep, the general fund had a slight gain of around $52,000.
From, from the 2012?
Yes.
And you've been around for a year or two. This is how many years that we've come in at budget or in the black?
Uh.
With maybe a little surplus?
I believe every year since I've been here, so around 14.
14 years. Got, we've been watching the dollars. Thank you.
We received back all of our revenue estimates from all the different departments, and they've all gone through and reviewed their budgets, so we have a revised number for 2014. Our revised shortfall is just over $1.6 million. That's down significantly from our original projections, mostly due to revenues that are coming in higher than anticipated. State revenues and operational revenues in various departments are all seeing an upswing from what we've had in the past few years. So we will be emailing this information out to all the departments, and then they will go ahead and get started on coming up with their plan to make their cuts.
So that is the number now that we are going to run with and?
Yes, yep, that's our number.
And this is about the time of the year generally, when you can get a pretty good idea on that as far as Craig Hill and?
Yeah, we've got good information on most of our state revenues, you know. Yeah, we've got good information on most of our state revenues, you know. Of course, the state could change something at any time, but based on what we know today, we're, we're pretty confident that this is a good number to go forward with.
Questions for Carrie at all?
Just another observation, comment. Because we've been watching the dollars here, the benefit for the county has been that our, our bond rating has improved substantially over the last, well, since I've been here, 10 years. And as a result, we just rebonded for this building for the remaining nine years and saved, what, $50,000 a year?
Yes.
Jail was probably $150,000 when we did that one, too.
Rebounded the jail.
Yeah.
That one seemed bigger.
Anything else for Carrie? Okay. Old business, no old business come forth. Item number seven, Change Order Review Committee Policy. Bill?
Sure. The County Board has had a, a Change Order Committee for, well, a number of years. Unfortunately, there hasn't been a lot of standard guidelines that department heads that might be working on projects can go to or refer to to ensure that they understand when they do need to come to the Change Order Committee and when they don't need to come to the Change Order Committee. So the thought was, let's develop some guidelines. They're very simple. We've tried to present them in a, in a very compact way. We, the key here is to ensure that everyone stays informed about changes that may occur on construction projects that we undertake. And certainly, we're suggesting that this policy be reviewed on a regular basis by administration as well as the Board, and if it's appropriate to make changes, that we do so. But the primary goal of this is just to provide guidance to staff so they understand when they need to come to you to start talking about changes in the scope of a project or changes in the value, the cost of a project.
Yeah, a couple I met with Bill earlier today, and I've sat on the Change Order Committee on different projects and different things. When we first put it in place, it was, I would say, we were, you know, I remember Mark coming in for $100, and we're like, "Come on, you should be able to make the call on some of that." It was because it was just some of our own policies that we had put into place. So another great example was when we were doing the demo work up at the day treatment, the old juvie center up there. They hit a old fuel tank that was in the ground, okay? They actually had to shut that down so that that change order could come back to the Change Order Committee. It was a week, it was like two weeks, and it was, it was kind of a, I won't say a cluster, but it was something that administration should have had the ability to say, "Hey, it's five grand, you got to remove the tank, you had to do it anyway," so on and so forth. So change out, change order policy, obviously, we review those things. We need to give administration a little bit of leeway to be able to make those calls on some of those types of things, just because, like I said, my, my experience of being on it's good, don't get me wrong, but sometimes, you know, there's got to be a little bit of leeway there. And I think, Bill, I have full confidence in him and be able to make the calls on some of that stuff in this particular threshold, so. Howard?
The, the only thing I would really request is that, you know, in any change order thing in which the administrator approves it, that we get that message at the next available meeting, you know, so that...
Yeah, a little update on something.
Yeah, so we have an update, you know, Commissioners, we had to make these changes, and I signed off on this, and here's the reason why.
As, as is the case with any new policy that's presented to the Board, you not asked to act on it when it's initially presented. What we do is present it to you first, and then there's a, a period of time in which we share it with the other elected officials and the department heads, give everybody 30 days to react to it, to review it, to provide some input on suggested changes or improvements that they may like to see, and then we bring it back to the Board for the Board to review once again and to take action to implement the, the policy. So we're really not asking anything of the Board other than make you aware of this. If you've got any concerns, before we send it out for review by department heads and other elected officials, please, please let us know. If you don't agree with the concept, the process stops right here, but if you do want it to move forward, we'll begin that 30-day review process.
Bill, just for the record, how, how long has this Change Order Review Committee been in existence?
You know, I've been on, I've been in my current position for two and a half, almost three years, and it's been here at least that long. I'm sure it existed long before that.
And the policy, prior to implementation of policy, there, there was no policy or is no policy?
Correct. There was, we could find nothing.
Does this policy reflect the current practice, or is this a new, new procedure entirely?
It, the procedure is pretty close to what we do right now. It mirrors it, but what it does is it creates a little more structure on the threshold, so some of the situations that Commissioner Bone brought up won't exist.
Essentially, you're codifying what has been in practice for some time and has been working.
Correct.
So this won't be a surprise to any department heads. It's a big change.
What's happened with forum change order committees, if we're going like the day treatment, night watch, you know, when we did that, okay, who wants to sit on the change order committee? Me, me, me. So you get three people that you would review those things. And so, like I said, I've sat on a handful of them, and just, there's been, and it's a great tool to have, so, you know, you get the information. It just, I know in a couple instances, like I said, it was, we ran into situations, the demo projects, the one that sticks out clearly in my head, we had to shut the whole project down, we had to put it on hold until we did the change order for the gas tank thing that had to be removed anyways, and it was a minimal amount of money, so clean up some of those types of things.
That's a good, good suggestion right there, Jeff, because sometimes we do jobs like that, it can cost you money while you're sitting still. I mean, a lot of times it's rolled into the people that are doing that particular job, why you say, "Okay, there's a penalty for us sitting here," so.
Yeah.
You know, a week or two goes by, it could be a little expensive, so you got to give a little flex in there, I understand.
Thank you.
You don't need a motion on this, I'm just going to sit on it.
I think I've got the message. You wanted to continue moving forward, and we'll bring it back to you. If we make any changes, we'll let you know what those are, and you can adopt it hopefully at a future meeting.
Go ahead. Do you appear with a track that, Bill? Don't you want this moved on to full board for action, or you just want to wait?
Just wait. Yeah, we won't take action until we get input from department heads.
So you want to give it a look to get some input from everybody?
Correct.
Okay. Item B, Strategic Federal Affairs, the Grant Writing Service Continuation.
The, when we renewed our contract with SFA last August, I believe it was, there was a new service that they offered. We agreed to try that new service for a six-month period. It was a grant writing and lobbying service. We agreed to give it a shot for six months, see how it worked out, see if it paid for itself, if it was worthwhile, and if so, then we would agree to continue paying for that service for the duration of the contract. It was a two-year contract. During that period of time, you probably remember, the lobbying firm, SFA, ended their relationship with the key person on their staff that did grant writing, so there was kind of a lull in there. They brought somebody new on, someone you've all met, Mr. John Kerr. He's been showing up at a lot of the department head meetings lately. And so we extended that review period simply so we could give it a true six-month trial. Well, that six-month trial is up, and it's the opinion of staff that has been working with SFA and with the department heads, that the service has been worthwhile, it has more than paid for itself so far, and actually, with the addition of Mr. Kerr to SFA, I think they're being much more aggressive in reaching out to departments and doing everything they can to try and encourage them to apply for grants and to assist them in the application process, actually writing some of the grants on behalf of the county as well. So the recommendation from staff is that the Board of Commissioners approve the continuation of the additional charge of $1,000 per month for the grant writing services with SFA.
Mr. Chair? Oh, go ahead.
I have a question, that's all.
Bill?
Do we have any dollar figures, Bill, as to how much they have brought in over above what we would normally have brought in? I guess what I'm looking at is something like the Burn JAG Grant at the Prosecutor's Office. They do that one every year, and yet it's on the list here for SFA. Did SFA go above and beyond and bring us more than we would have gotten? I mean, you know what I mean?
Actually, the, the Burn JAG Grant program funds many things. You've all seen this here many, many times. This, this program that they work with the Prosecutor's Office was something we haven't done before. That was actually a digital or a computer-based prosecution solution or software system that allowed them to eliminate some paper and to proceed much more quickly with some of their paperwork. It also involved a relationship with many of the local police departments. So it was something that we have never tried to apply for before. It was something above and beyond what we usually use the JAG grants for.
So they actually found another way to use that same money?
Yes, and in fact...
That's what I was asking, is...
Correct.
So the, all this list of everything we had goes over and above what we would normally have done?
Yes, it is. We've made it clear to SFA that we don't want them writing the grants that we normally write ourselves internally.
There are some that are just annual grants that are done every single year.
Exactly.
Yeah, we didn't need them to do those, we wanted to do another thing, and that's what this list is.
Correct.
So I have a question, too, for Administrator Kaufman. So looking at things like working with the community foundation as they develop the water walkway down here, the waterfront, for the, let's say, coastal zone management grants or environmental grants, that, that would all fall into that category, too, of where we can get federal money to assist in helping develop that whole area.
Correct.
I'll use the Maritime Center as a great example. They are extremely involved in the whole Maritime Center process as far as the public-private partnership piece, where the grant opportunities exist, those types of things. At the end of the day, you need somebody to be able to kind of carry the ball on some of these things, and I can tell you that they've been really good as far as, you know, here's different opportunities, you know, that are available, so as you're collecting this information, you know, you're piecing this thing together and, you know, here's how you're going to make it happen if it's going to happen, so they've been...
Well, those funds are out there, and, and if they're available, we just will get them. Do you need a motion on this? If so, I would make the motion that we continue our grant service agreement with Strategic Federal Affairs. Court?
Just, just to move it on to full board, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed. Item C, the Health Department request for revisions to Manning Table, Dr. Markanton, and Greg.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you. As a prelude to our request for the Manning Table changes, I'd like to just share briefly a little bit of an overview of what the Health Department is, is working towards and what our vision is. It's no secret that our appropriations have dwindled dramatically since I've come on board. Last Greg and I looked, it was close to a 30% overall reduction. In rev, in appropriations, we've tried very hard to make lemons out of lemonade. We have used our diminished staff more creatively, we've cross-trained, we've tried very hard to improve our revenues. The bottom line is you can only make so much revenue with a, you know, bare-bones kind of staff. An even more important factor is that every agency in this county is looking at transformation of how they deliver service, reducing redundancies, collaborating. And I believe, and, and we know that we have expertise, evidence-based programs, interventions, that can really make a lot of our community programs and our healthcare delivery systems more efficient and more effective. That means better revenue for us as a Health Department, and probably more importantly, better outcomes for the population. Everyone is being held to population outcome standards, and we are a population health outcome expert at the Health Department. We need to transform our staff and make that happen. So as we have opportunities with retirements and vacancies, we are going to be coming to you asking for changes in how those staff are refilled. Sometimes you have to spend money to make money, and I do believe we're at that point, where if we want to generate a different kind of service, a more productive service to the community, we are going to need different kinds of staff, and some of them are going to have to have a little bit more professional credentialing. So today is simple. Today, we're looking at transplanting a coordinator position in our Vision and Hearing Services for two part-timers. That's an overall savings. We don't need a coordinator in that position. And we're also asking to replace a WIC position with a nurse. And this has been an ongoing effort of mine to take our services and coordinate them so that we don't have silos of services, and a WIC, a nurse, will cost more. But for instance, the ability to have a nurse in that position, we can start doing something called fluoride varnishes, which is a service, an outpatient service, that WIC commonly does if there are nurses available to do it, and we've estimated it can generate anywhere between $40,000 and $60,000, depending on our billing. So that's a simple example of how taking current vacancies and changing them, perhaps sometimes to a staff that costs a little bit more, where we can do a lot more with that person. So the question in front of you today is the Manning Table change for the, the WIC position and the Vision and Hearing, but the preface is that we are going to be coming forward over the next several weeks and months, talking to you about more of these kind of changes that will allow us to be more functional on your behalf. Questions?
I have a question. Dr. Markanton, on your, you've mentioned WIC a couple of times. Is that the nutritionist position that's referred to in your?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So WIC has traditionally been run just by nutritionists and dieticians and clerical positions. We found that by putting nurses into some of those positions, which is acceptable by the WIC programming, it costs a little bit more to pay a nurse, but they provide a much broader and higher quality level of service to the clients.
Now, in, in regards to those services coming from the, the nurse, the registered nurse, those billing services are billed to, billed to Medicaid or to Medicare, so we get reimbursement for it?
Those services that can be billed to Medicaid and third-party payer insurances are, WIC is a siloed, federal-funded program. What is WIC is WIC.
Yeah.
And what is, what is other services? But we have a, a method to differentiate those. But yes, we can pull out billable services while those clients are in front of us. Lead screening is another example.
Oh, okay. And that wouldn't be covered under women, infant, and children, WIC?
WIC does not pay for non-WIC services, but if the provision, if we, we do those services and we do a cost share kind of assessment there, we, we can go ahead and bill for them separately.
Excellent.
Am I correct to, in reading this, that the cost of that nurse is, the services she's going to be billing out is just about wash?
No, there'd be a significant improvement in revenue, I believe.
Well, I was looking at the bill of ours, about $35,000 to $40,000, and I, I see her wage.
You're not paying the nutritionist any?
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah, the nutritionist would be, that position would be held vacant.
All right. Okay. That answered that. Thanks.
Any other questions?
No questions.
Motion to send it on to the full board? Court?
Second?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay.
Commissioner Riley?
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number D?
Thank you, Dr.
Thank you, Doctor.
Convention Center Professional Service Contract Amendments, CSL. Couple things. You want to talk a little bit about it, Bill? I'm gonna take team this with you too.
CSL is the firm that is represented by Bill Kruger. Many of you have met him numerous times. We hired him originally to help us ensure that the design of the convention center would fit the market that we were looking for, that we felt we could attract to this area for conventions and other types of events up at the site. The other thing that Mr. Kruger was hired for is to assist us with a lot of the organizational issues. There may be room block agreements with the hotel to ensure that we've got adequate rooms reserved when a convention is coming into town. They could be ensuring that we've got adequate policies and procedures in place to ensure that we can adequately attract some of these events that might come in from around the state as well. He also was brought on to help us ensure that we've got a good, strong relationship and understanding with the hotel management group and with the restaurant management group that we're going to be sharing the building with and sharing some services with. So all of his tasks were not necessarily related to overseeing some of the design elements, but more of it was really to help us with some of the internal organizational challenges that we faced. You know, obviously, this is a project that none of us have been involved with in the past, and getting it right the first time is extremely important. And that's one of the areas that Mr. Kruger excels in. When his contract was presented to you originally, it did not include a set figure. What it did is it included a series of tasks that he would perform, described as the scope of work that he would perform for us, and it included an hourly rate for himself and others within his organization that might assist us. Then what we did was we sat down with Mr. Kruger and we said, "Well, how much do you think, how much time do you think it will take to accomplish each one of these tasks?" He then provided us with a figure, and we came up with what we presented to you, which was a not-to-exceed cost of $40,000 for his services. Over the last couple of months, the scope of our project has changed. We have been able to bring the city of Port Huron into this project, and they have agreed to cooperate with the county and jointly agree on the hiring of a venue management group, which is SMG. We've talked about that the last couple of months. And SMG will be managing the convention facility as well as managing McMorn Auditorium for the city and under a separate understanding with the city. But as a result of him getting involved in that process, which is something I don't think anyone envisioned would happen when this began, we have incurred additional costs. So what we've got before you today is a request that we extend the not-to-exceed figure for Mr. Kruger's contract by $30,000. We have talked to him, asked him what he thinks, additional work he's got to do, how much longer he thinks it will take to finish out this project, and we feel confident that the $30,000 will do that. One thing to keep in mind, since we've begun using Mr. Kruger with the city of Port Huron and the McMorn project, some of our expenses are directly related to tasks that he has completed on behalf of the city and on behalf of McMorn. I have been talking with the city administration about this issue and about the estimated additional work that needs to be done. They have agreed that the city does have a responsibility to pay for their share of the work. So as we move forward with billings, Mr. Kruger will advise us what portion of the billing he believes is attributed to the city of Port Huron and McMorn side of the project and what he feels is attributed to our side. So when I bring this to you, I can't tell you exactly what the split will be. It depends on the type of work that's going to occur over the next probably five or six months as we finish up the work with Mr. Kruger.
When you, I'm sorry. I'll let you finish.
Just one, okay. One more thing. We have made it perfectly clear to everyone involved in this project, and I think if you talk to our construction manager, or you talk to some of our other project partners, whether it's the hotel investor, the restaurant investor, that we've got a cap on the cost of this project. And I have used the analogy before of building a house. When you set a budget for a house, you set that budget at $100,000, and if somebody in your family decides that they want to do something different with the house and it's going to cost an extra $5,000, then you've got to find somewhere else to cut $5,000 so you can stay at $100,000. That's exactly what will be going, occurring here. If we've got additional costs that we've got to expend on one element of the project, we've got to find a trade-off. We've got to find somewhere else where we might be able to realize some savings. We have, as we progress with this project, been able to find some savings with some of the contracts that we've undertaken, and so this will not represent any increase in the overall cost of the project as it's planned.
I think that was one of the concerns, and we did speak on this a little bit. It, the cap of the $9 million, I know, was a big concern of people, and knowingly that we've got this, when people read additional, they immediately think you're going over and above. And I think what you just said was that we're, it's because of his contract, and we're still at the $9 million contract. We're gonna stay at the $9 million contract, so we're not going over it, and we'll just find another spot in there that, or maybe a saving somewhere else, but we're staying within what was put down as the $9 million contract, so we're not going over that. So I agree, if we're going the $9 million plus, additionals, additionals, then I could see where people have a problem, but if we're going in the direction that you just said, I don't have a problem.
Wanted to just be clear on that, because what we're asking Mr. Kruger to do is totally different than what we hired him originally to do. We hired him to do a specific thing, and I think everybody found a comfort level with that back on March 12th, and as we worked with him, on January was actually the first meeting that I had with the McMorn Authority Board, because then the discussion started talking about the professional management piece. When we first brought Mr. Kruger on, we never talked to him about, "We are hiring you to actually put a management, a, to go help us find a professional management group, SMG Venue Works, Global Spectrum." That was not a part of it. So we need help doing that. Then we need help to facilitate all these different groups, Convention Visitors Bureau, McMorn Authority. How are we gonna piece this together? And we all felt that he was the guy that would be able to help us do this. So, his scope of work has been additional work, because he's still doing what we had hired him initially to do. The McMorn Convention Center, McMorn piece, kind of evolved after we had hired him for other specifics. And the reason we picked him, to be quite frank, because I think everybody, whether you supported the project or not, we all felt that we had the right guy in Mr. Kruger and his ability to do this, hence he's done it other places. So, when you talk about the change, it's, we essentially hired him, took him on to do a whole 'nother task force that wasn't, wasn't the original part of it. But I do agree with Bill, and I don't think, you know, talking with the city of Port Huron, they understand that they're receiving benefit from this, and so are we. By having Mr. Kruger being able to put these agreements together and get the synergies and those types of things in the staff, essentially, it's gonna save you money in the long run because you would be required to have X amount of staffing for the Convention Center, McMorn. If he can pull all these things together, then I think, well, I know, I know it's going to be able to save money, and that's the intent of putting all those under a professional management group, so.
Well, I think too, Jeff, I think the original, and I don't know if you discussed that before I came on the board or not, but to have somebody professional run the entities that you're talking about, for instance, McMorn and the Convention Center, only makes sense because if you don't have somebody run it that knows how to run it, you know, you can't have a hotel running, you can't have none of us sitting up here qualified to run something like that. So, going in that direction, I think, is proper, to have somebody run it that knows what's out there and how to bring people in, and some are gonna fit in McMorn and some are gonna fit at the Convention Center. I think that's the way to go. But the question is, when we do those things, be whatever it is, then we gotta stay within our budget, and that's just what Bill said, and I certainly agree. Long as we're staying at the $9 million, I believe was the number, then I, we're doing the right thing.
Just, we did budget additional money for these kinds of services in that original budget that we set up. So, it's not like we're dipping into some other area. We set aside money for architecture, engineering, and that was additional. My thought though, of course, is that if we put in more work now, because this is complicated to bring in a joint management agreement with the city of Port Huron, the McMorn Authority, and the county, and to make sure it works for all of us, because, you know, if this is a win-win for the McMorn complex, and it's a win-win for the county Convention Center, it's going to be a huge win for the community, you know, the synergies of the two projects together. But we have to make sure we get it right, and I don't think there's anyone on this board that doesn't feel that Bill Kruger is the right person to help us make that, you know. I don't think there's anyone else that I came across that has the kind of expertise he does.
Well, it's good to hear too, that the city is willing to pick up part of that too, and even though it's in that night-
They have to go back before their board.
Yeah, right.
Put words in their mouth, but they've expressed interest, because they understand his capacity now, when he works on these things, is a joint city and county portion of it. I can still go back to the original. What we hired him originally to do was, you know, X, Y, and Z, and he's fulfilling that. And while we had him in town, we gave, you know, we hired him to do a whole 'nother-
Yeah, I was there.
-set of things, so. Steve?
It's certainly right that they should, because they're getting benefit too here.
I guess what I'd like to see this board do is get your numbers nailed down, not only on what additional work this $30,000 will do and who will cost share on that, but also what portion of our $40,000 has already benefited the city and put that in as well. And I would think that it would be prudent for this board to send this to the city first, rather than just go $30,000 more, and it's not a lot of money on a project of this size. I think there's a principle here. We engaged Kruger, we spent resources finding Kruger, we've spent getting him up to speed on this whole process, and from everything I've gathered, from what Jeff and Bill have said, and what I've looked into previously, is this additional work he's doing for this joint operating agreement with SMG and McMorn and all that really is the cause of this need to increase those fees. And I think that should be a city issue first, because it'll tell me what they put on the table, what their interest is to support this project, to be a partner, you know. I don't like the idea of, "Let's increase it, and we'll have some discussions with the city." This needs to go to the city first. They need to commit maybe all the $30,000 because of what we've spent so far. And then it's easy for us, because the city is a good partner, they step up to the plate and off we go. I'd really like to see that, because if it doesn't happen, that would also give me another indication of lack of partner. So, I think that's really important, we do that, not just increase it here.
If we send this on to our full board, which is in two weeks, I don't know if the city's got a meeting and the time that they can have a discussion regarding that.
I couldn't tell you. I'm not sure what their, Mr. Shawty, do you know their schedule?
I happen to know their schedule. And, no, they have canceled their second meeting of the month, so their next meeting, I believe, would be the second Monday of August. I think they have a special meeting tonight, and then the next meeting would be the second Monday of August, whatever date that is.
And the other thing too, I think they'd be inclined to be a little more generous if we hadn't taken action, if it's like, "Let's see what you fellows will do, and then we'll..." If we do it, there'd be disincentive to come on board, I think, so.
That's a good point. However, our concern too is how soon do we want to have this professional manager in place? How soon do we want a decision on a manager for this now?
Well, because he's gonna continue to work with SMG to refine our agreement with them and part of that process, so do you, and we need to bring-
What's our target date? Do we want someone, the hotel presumably is scheduled to open in 1st of August, late July 1st of August. Part of that facility will be convention areas that we will have. Now, they're very minor, shouldn't be a big problem to manage, but how soon do we want a manager in place? Do we want one by the end of the year? What's our target, what's our timeframe? I guess I really haven't.
Actually, I have been talking with SMG about this, and our thought is probably within three or four months after the opening of the facility, we will want them there. Will we get to the point where-
Bill's so first out, and then-
I'm talking about the opening of the ballroom, which is the first section that we will own. That's the first area that we will begin renting. So we're looking at sometime in late fall that we would want a manager here. I don't know what the city's timeline is, and in fact, we've got a meeting scheduled, I believe it's Monday, to sit down with the city to talk about the timing issues-
It's actually July 22nd.
July 22nd, and how we move forward with SMG.
Steve?
And to comment on Howard's point, sure, it's important to get these things done as soon as possible, because it's gonna put us in that much better position. But, the city has bylaws that provide for special meetings. There's no reason official action can't be taken very quickly on this if it's important to the city. I don't want to say we need to rush this, just because I'm not taking that on ourselves.
I'm not. What I'm saying is, you know, if we're not, we're not really pressured to have a manager in place for four or five months, well, then there's, there's no big pressure for us to make, move on this immediately.
We'll pass on the full board. If we don't have our ducks in row, we can table it on our end.
Yeah, that's right.
We can get this thing together with the city. We can bring it back at a committee meeting and, you know, pass out, but we'll just send it on, we'll get Bill to work with Bruce, and they can kind of get their timeframes together now.
Now, the city manager's leaving? Bruce Brown is retiring? Is that, are we having a switch there too, or no?
Yeah.
It's early this year. Next year, okay.
Just one other comment, if I could, about the $9 million for the total build-out of this thing, you know, everything that we've talked about, we're not going to exceed that. But, keep in mind, when we did that first walkthrough and we rolled out the, well, the architectural view, and they saw that solid wall, and they said, "Gotta have windows." Those cost extra, you know? So, staying within this $9 million, we're gonna do it, but we added the windows, they're there, looking good, and so, but, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tight.
On that point, Bill, you know, you say we'll not increase the cost. I know there's a certain component of this project for soft costs and consultants and engineers and things of that nature, so I'm assuming what you're telling me is this additional $30,000, if we were to pay that from the county, that there are funds already allocated for that purpose. It's not gonna diminish other aspects of the facility, because we're reaching into, you know, the construction piece of it, because, I think that's what you're telling me.
Correct. There are aspects of the project that have already been bid, and they either come in under what we estimated, or contracts we've recently secured that have come in lower than what we anticipated. So we've had some savings, and as a result, yes, if I need $10,000-
It's not coming from the general fund, it's not affecting- It's not coming from the general fund, it's not affecting operations of the counties, it's coming from what's-
It's part of that, part of that pie.
That's important, and I think that's what the people out in the county has to hear. I mean, I think that's, that's super important. I agree with your thought there, and if the, looks like the city meeting would be about August 12th, would be the second Monday.
They can have a special meeting, too. There's no reason we do it all the time.
Yeah, they can. But if they don't, I mean, we're not under the gun here. I think you hit a good point there.
Done. Enough discussion on that. This is just to move it on to the full board and get Bill to continue to work with Bruce. And if we gotta table it for the time being, so be it. But all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those opposed. Item number E, the day treatment night watch restructure. We've got Gary here.
Good evening again. Due to a shrinking census and continuing budget problems that the county's looking at, although that has decreased, fortunately, we had made the decision to close the juvenile detention center and residential treatment program. As part of that, what we are proposing is that our current day treatment night watch program, which has been in existence for approximately 18 years, has been a very successful program. We are proposing that we restructure that and add to that program an intensive day treatment night watch program to service a lot of the kids that would be normally in the detention center or the residential treatment program. What we, as I, you have in your handouts, the total number of full-time staff that we have at both the juvenile center and at day treatment totals 35. With the restructuring, we will still have 35 full-time employees, but we will reduce the number of part-time employees from a total of 42 to five. And what we are looking at is approximate savings of $1,120,215. Less state reimbursement of $560,107 for a net estimated savings of $560,108. Research shows that treating children and families within the community and within their own homes is a preferred treatment choice. We've proven that with our day treatment night watch program. And so we are proposing tonight and looking for your approval of restructuring that program and making it, making in addition to it, an intense day treatment night watch program.
Just a question. When you're saying "we," you're talking about probate judges?
The court, yes.
A probate court.
Well, family division, yes.
Family division. And those are circuit judges?
Yes.
Okay.
Gary, if you, under the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee meeting we just approved or sent on to the full board, community mental health aspect of the day-to-night watch, but you've mentioned at that time that that does not include this new program that you're-
Not at this time.
So will we have to negotiate with community mental health for services for the aggressive or the newer piece you're talking about doing?
We have, in our budget estimates, we have figured in our own clinical services at this time. But like I said, we are meeting with community mental health next week to review what agreements we can make with them. And if, again, if they can give us a deal similar to what we have, we would certainly go that route as opposed to doing our own. Because like I said, for $60,000 for two clinical therapists, you can't find that anywhere. So our estimates are a little bit higher for the two that we would hire.
Can you use the clinical therapist, the day treatment, in your new aggressive program?
Yes. The proposal is that both the staff at the current day treatment night watch program and the proposed intense program would be interchangeable. So they would each be familiar with each side of it, which helps us with our staffing and really helps with the overall program.
Steve, Jeff, I'm gonna ask a question. I appreciate meeting last, we last met to talk about this. I know you're gonna talk to Judge Brown about it. Did that, is that tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, you're meeting Judge Brown tomorrow. Just for the record, so that all the commissioners know how this, how this rolls out, you're talking about circuit judges and so forth. Well, Judge Brown's a probate judge, he's also family division.
Right.
You know, there's, what you call him isn't as so important as, as I see this, when you, you need to get, I wanna, myself personally, I wanna see where Judge Brown comes down on this proposal. Because what Judge Brown does, he's very passionate about service for the kids, and this board wants to support that, I'm sure of that. If a young person gets into trouble and the court takes jurisdiction, first level, he talks about preference of home treatment, which is everyone would like to see the kids treated at home, behavior contracts, treated on probation, not detained, not put into residential treatment. But I know from talking to Judge Brown, because I'm up there a lot, and I see what he does, and I was a court administrator in the probate division of San Lech for a while, doing a lot of the same things. And I know, understand the budget piece of it. But you can put a kid on probation, some of them, they get it, some don't. Some go to the next level, intenser probation. Some of those get it, some don't. Then you go on to day treatment night watch. They're in the home, they come in for services, treatment, they go home at night. That works for a certain portion as well. But you can draw a line right under day treatment night watch for home treatment versus out-of-home treatment. And typically, out-of-home treatment was detention, just lock them up.
Yep.
Well, day treatment night watch was something that Grant Nixon had put together, or the residential treatment, rather, to, so the county could get the benefit of reimbursement of the childcare fund, and also give the court an alternative for residential treatment that's not just straight detention. In residential treatment, they get social issues taken care of, they get psychological, amount of health issues taken care of. In detention, you can get some schooling, but you're locked up and maybe get your GED, that's it, that's what you get. So I know from Judge Brown's perspective, when I go through this litany of some get it on probation, intenser probation, day treatment night watch, he feels very strongly there's a certain percentage of those kids that have to come out of the home. Because the parents, when the court takes jurisdiction of the child, they also take jurisdiction of the parents. And Judge Brown runs a pretty tight ship. And nobody, for the attorneys, for the litigants, for the parties, for the kids, for the family, and that's the piece I think he's really worried about. Because he's gonna, he's not gonna take kids that need residential or detention treatment and put them on the other side of the fence back in day treatment night watch. He's gonna lock them up. And if, and we don't have a detention center lock them up, he's gonna send them out of county to lock them up, or, you know. So that's gonna change all of our numbers. So I know you're meeting with Judge Brown, and I've tried to meet, I've talked to him a few times about it, and I'm, and Judge Kelly, see with our one court of justice, and Judge Kelly's our chief judge. I've been told by Judge Brown that Judge Kelly and him are gonna work close together, and Judge Kelly says for him to get that worked through. And I wanna see, I think this is something we need to see come to this board on a recommendation from Judge Kelly, because he is the chief judge of this circuit, you know, with, working through his staff and through the subordinate judges and through Gary and all that, rather than just send it to full board now. I don't think it's ready to go to full board. I, you know, I would hate to see it just go up to full board and us not know what's going on with the whole other piece. So I don't think it's ready to go.
Well, we are, we will provide Judge Brown with alternatives for, and we realize there are kids that have to be in detention. There are kids that are gonna have to be sent out. We are in the process of finalizing contracts with surrounding counties for those services. But we feel that we're providing alternative services that can hit the majority of those kids. And yes, the ongoing discussions with the judges is-
But understand, the decision for placement lies strictly with Judge Brown on those issues.
Yes, it does.
And he's quite passionate on, you know, what services these kids will get. And they may not go to the cheapest facility, you know, the most, they say cheapest, but the most economically advantageous. He may send them to a different facility because of what they provide for the kid. And if we're doing this for cost-saving things, I just wanna keep our eyes on that number so we don't-
May not be a good one.
We don't have a problem later and also a disservice to the kids. So I just want a little more, make sure that piece gets handled. I wanna see where Judge Brown comes down, where Judge Kelly comes down, before this board passes it.
But when you, when you have a facility and your staff to house 70, correct me if I'm wrong, and you're running 28, it doesn't take long to figure out that this, you know, you've gotta look at some other alternative.
We have tremendous space out there that's underutilized.
And I think they had to budget additional monies in anticipation that you are gonna have to send some additional-
Yes, we did.
-people out. So that, you know, they've talked through those issues and- They're gonna, they're gonna meet on Friday. We can send this, two weeks, we're talking down to the full board-
Right, one, two, three.
-in the middle of time. If it's not ready to go, then so be it. But he has been in front of Judge Kelly. He's talked with Judge Kelly about it. Judge Kelly's presiding judge. You know, you talk about the commissioners getting involved in these decisions. It's ultimately up to the courts. And I think Gary, I commend him for, A, bringing this before us. But I know he's done his homework over there, too, on it, and done some meetings and those types of things. So let him, Bill's gonna be part of that meeting on Friday. And then if there's some other additional alternatives that maybe come out of this, or some tweaks to it that the judges would like to see, I'm all ears for it.
Just saying, to me, you don't, you don't go forward until the court has that figured out. We're putting it on in two weeks for action. Maybe we won't take action, I get that. But why not just-
Yeah.
-get it done first and then put it on for action and get her done, you know.
I think it's also possible, if I'm hearing this all correctly, there's a $560,000 savings that you're looking at. That figure could go down a little bit depending on where some of these kids are sent by some of the judges. Or that figure could also go up, because you have some money built in there. And if the judges do not utilize all of that money that you've budgeted in there, obviously you're gonna make more money. The 560,000 could be, could be higher.
Could go higher, yes. We've been, I think, fairly conservative with that figure.
We don't know how many kids are in that space in there until we actually do it.
We don't wanna talk about when you were on the other side of the fence, Steve, because you were in San Lech County. You guys didn't have 10 cents to run together and do any type of pro or hammy.
Several years ago, I was the administrator of the juvenile division for San Lech County, and their budget was very, very austere. And Judge Maltby, who's since retired, was very cooperative with the board. He would only send kids, subject to what funds he had to send kids. And, you know, that's not necessarily how it works. If the judge thinks a kid needs service, he can send them for service. I think that's what Judge Brown would do. If this kid needs service, they're gonna get the service regardless of what's budgeted. So there's a bit of a difference.
And, oh, I'm sorry. I would just, a couple comments. Obviously, the court is requesting this. I'm a little reluctant to try to tell the judges how to manage their, you know, their responsibilities. But I also recall that, you know, when we had to send juveniles away for special services, before we built our facility, it wasn't a commodity here. That was costing us $300 a day for some of these juveniles. And so you could burn through a lot of money in a hurry at $300 a day.
Well, and like I said, Mr. Heidman, we are looking at surrounding counties for programs that they already have in existence. I've had three counties reach out to us, offering services that are actually less than what we're paying in our own facility. We've also looked at the numbers, and since we opened the residential treatment program seven years ago, I believe, the numbers have gone steadily down. At that time, we brought back approximately 43 kids back into our county. Right now, in our, in our entire building, today, we have 32. That's in the entire building, that didn't count detention. So the number of juvenile petitions coming in are down, probation cases are down, average daily population in our center is down. So as the court administrator, my job is to manage the resources of the court and provide those services. And I can't justify keeping a half-empty building at that cost, with a full staff.
I'm assuming your McCombs and your Oklins are running in similar situations. And you can't have a half-full facility here, you can't have a half-full facility in McComb, Oakland. So it does make sense, I think, from a county perspective, to be able to reach out to some of these other counties and say, hey, if there's a void, we can help you with your problem, and, you know, vice versa, too, so.
Yes. In every, there's 16 juvenile centers across the state, and every one we've talked to, populations are down and have been going down. And in fact, nationally, 40 states, I believe, in 2012, reported decreases in their population in closing juvenile centers.
Well, I would interpret that as a good thing.
Well, I, yeah, I would hope it is. And again, we've been very successful with the programs that we've had. And we're not, you know, just emptying the institution or suggesting that. We are providing alternatives, and we feel that, you know, certainly the research that we show or have read and that we've shown in our own county, we can be effective in treating those. The intensive program is not gonna be like day treatment. It's gonna be seven days a week, they're gonna be there pretty much 12 hours a day, the parents are gonna be involved in monitoring their behavior in the evening. And as Mr. Samasco said, yeah, there are some parents that, you know, that's not gonna happen because they're not gonna monitor it. And those are the types of kids that we would look that, yeah, we would probably have to put them into placement someplace. But it just makes sense to do this with the shrinking population.
One other question for Gary. This issue of the declining juvenile population, Gary, and you may not know this, but is that a function of the changing of societal demographics? In other words, are there less juveniles to get in trouble? Are, you know, the baby boomers are going up, Generation X is coming. Is it a shrinking population of juveniles we're serving, or are we just more successful in making better young people? I mean, maybe you don't know, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I, it seems to be the trend. And again, with Michigan's economy, the way it's been, I don't know if folks have been, you know, moving out. But like I said, since I've been in this position for the last three years, the numbers have been steadily going down on a daily basis, almost. So.
Bill? This might be a little late to talk about this right now, but we have a very nice facility over there. Have we looked at maybe using our facility as opposed to using McComb? I mean, we're going to McComb because they're only half-full, and somebody else is only half-full. Have we thought about, maybe we should be the facility that is full, and we bring them into us?
Well, we have reached, you know, with the declining population, as I said, I have reached out to surrounding counties, and especially those counties that don't even have a detention center. And again, keeping in mind, it's not a mandated service to have it. As I said, only 16 counties have them at this point in time. And the only, well, let me take that back. LaPire County has sent a few kids to us that we've housed, and San Lech County recently sent one. And that was, you know, over the last three years.
That's not enough, though, to make it effective to have it open?
And it, and it's, you can't count on it.
Okay. Any other questions? Just move it on to full board and let us know how the rest of it shakes with the meetings with the judges. That's what I see. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Moving on, item F, the workman's compensation contract renewal.
Sure. Currently, the county's workers' compensation coverage, we're self-insured for workers' comp. However, we do hire a third-party administrator to run the program for us. And you'll see in the memo the type of services that they do provide to us. We've had the same provider for 36 years. We have talked internally about going out just to ensure that we're getting the best rates that we can, kind of do a market check. And we've done that a number of times with a number of services here the last few years. So our intent is to begin the process of seeking proposals for a third-party administrator for a workers' comp program. However, we realize that's going to take some time to do. And our current contract with Broadspire will expire later on this year, in fact, in late August. So what we're looking to do is extend our existing contract with Broadspire for a period of 12 months. During that 12-month period, we'll take the steps that are necessary to analyze our current program and to request proposals to see if we can have this service provided to us at a less cost to the, to the county.
Questions from Mr. Kaufman? Questions for Mr. Kaufman at all? Just move it on.
We shouldn't have moved it on?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item number G, the employment agreement for the veterinary technician for A. Berry. Would you like to talk about that, Mr. Moxall? Got to give you some TV time since you've been sitting here so long.
Okay, we were contacted by Kerry's office. Due to IRS regulations, the part-time veterinary technician will no longer be able to be classified as a contract employee. They've been a contract employee since we took over animal control. That she needed to be moved to part-time employee status to meet IRS guidelines, regulations. By moving her to a part-time employee, there won't be any additional hours. There won't be an additional pay. It'll be the same amount of hours and the same amount of pay that she receives currently.
Any questions at all, Bill?
Is that, this a veterinary technician?
Yeah, she's a licensed veterinary technician that works under Joe Rail, our veterinary that comes into the clinic. She treats the dogs and cats that come in, gets them ready for adoption.
I was just looking at the salary and I didn't think you could hire it.
No. She also kind of works with Baker College that saved us a lot of money as far as spaying and neutering the animals.
Very good.
You need a motion? I would so move.
Judge's support.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number H, the Board of Commissioners meeting schedule revisions. One, I would like you to take note, is the July twenty-fourth. It's going to be a Wednesday. Because this whole Thursday thing between boat night, next Thursday, we're doing our traveling thing. I'd really like to get you guys down to the city of St. Clair.
Livestock sale.
Livestock sale. Steve and a couple of commissioners are very involved in the Goodell's thing. So, we felt that the Wednesday would work and I'd really like to get, as part of the traveling circuit, I'd like to get you guys down to St. Clair to see the setup that is going on for the boat races because that's our big weekend.
Since your boat sank, we don't know.
No, we're going to do it at the pavilion in the St. Clair Boat Harbor. When you come into the City Marina in St. Clair, there's the pavilion right there on the left-hand side.
On the south side or the north side of the river?
Uh, it's on the south side of the river. When you come into St. Clair, you go over the bridge and the City Marina, you pull in there, you'll be able to see the pavilion. I will be hosting that. It is casual attire is required. So, leave the suits and ties at home. And we're going to be doing the meeting down there at the pavilion. It is July twenty-fourth, which is a Wednesday. And then, there are some other things on here as far as with our traveling meeting schedules where we're going to be having it.
The members of the Elginak Lions that normally meet on Wednesday will bow to the livestock committee because they're more important. So, we'll bow to you then, Bill, Wednesday. Thank you, Commissioner Gray.
Bill? Before you leave this, if you take a look at September, earlier this year, we set a joint meeting for the county planning commission and the board of commissioners for August. They've requested that we bump that out to September. And they've provided two potential dates, September twelfth and September twenty-sixth. And they're leaving it up to you to decide when you would like to do that.
Does it matter?
Well, it does because we tentatively scheduled in here on September twenty-sixth a budget workshop at five-thirty. So, that would be problematic, I think, to also have that joint meeting unless we had it much earlier, let's say at three-thirty.
You know what, let's just keep it on the twelfth for now. Let's see how the August thing shakes out.
You want to have it on the twelfth?
Pick the earlier one. If it doesn't work, you bump it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm thinking the twelfth and then just keep the workshop on the twenty-sixth.
Do we need a motion to have it on the twelfth or?
No, no, I mean, it's a new schedule.
You do need a motion.
For the new, okay, new schedule?
New schedule, yes.
I would so move.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Other ways and means matters. Information only, items number E through C. Motion to receive and file those items.
Abud.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Receive and file packets?
Motion.
Somebody, second? Howard, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Adjournment.
Abud. Abud.
Howard, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Adjournment.